Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the Tuesday, October twenty second, twenty twenty four Newcastle Town Board meeting. Uh may I have a motion to open the work session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so today we're going to start off by discussing uh bench plaque policy um brought to us by the B A B Beautification Advisory Board.
You know, I'm gonna actually sorry. It's fine. It's okay. Uh I'm gonna ask the board if we could um go to eminent domain first. Lori Morton was gonna try to join us.
Okay, that's fine.
Uh I texted her but I don't see her online yet.
Okay, so we can we can switch it up?
Okay.
And let's go to eminent domain.
Lino, can I defer to you to talk us through it?
Sure. This uh what was presented to you this evening supervisor members of the oh my mic is not working bad. There we go. Sorry about that. So what's presented to you tonight is a resolution. This is on Corbin Way if you recall uh this board is looking at the possibility of condemning that that property for a D P W facility. Um what you have before you this evening is a resolution uh to really kind of start the process over again. Uh the process was started about three years ago, maybe actually more than that. But I just felt that going forward since so much time has elapsed since you were going through this and before I was here, I just felt it'd be better just to start off authorizing us to start that process, which would entail updating the appraisal that was obtained a couple of years ago, uh refreshing that and then starting the whole E D P L process again. So what you have this evening is the resolution authorizing that and authorizing me to go forward and start that process. So that's the resolution that you have before you this evening. Again, this process was started by my predecessor but it it kind of dotted negotiations going back and forth and since because the time has elapsed, I didn't want to take a chance that anything was stale in terms of secret or anything else. So I'd like to just start from scratch and just do it over.
Okay. Um what do you estimate the process, the the timing of the process would be this time around?
So that that'll vary. So if it go if if this can be resolved in negotiations, hopefully I would say within the next maybe three to five months. But if it goes litigation, it will take longer than that uh because there are timeframes that have to be complied with in terms of noticing uh in terms of offer letters that need to go out. So you're you're looking at hopefully if we can get it resolved before the actual petition is filed in eminent domain, uh that would be the time to resolve it. But if it goes to the petition process where it's filed in Westchester County Supreme, it can still be settled obviously. But um if it's not settled, they could take you know usually those things generally in in eminent domain, you have the the ac- the acquisition where you acquire the property, but then is also valuation. So generally the acquisition of the property doesn't take that long relatively speaking in in terms of in jurisprudence, other people may disagree with that, but from my world relatively quickly in terms of the acquisition of the property. But sometimes when the parties have an issue with valuation, don't agree, that's the time that that could takes a lot longer. Um I know I've I've had a couple of eminent domain trials that I've happened in my career where it was just about valuation. It's very rare that you could challenge a public purpose portion of that. But in terms of what that property is worth, that sometimes that could be litigated and can take a couple of years, maybe more.
So um Lino has uh provided the board with a copy of the resolution that we would be looking to approve tonight?
Right, I just wanted to know whether it was in shorthand form on our resolution sheet or if we um
No, it's not. This would be the full resolutions.
we would need to read the resolution
Right, so page seven.
into the record uh later on. Okay.
Aye, okay.
I don't
Not particularly.
I mean you don't have to get the reading duly noted that and just adopt the resolution. I mean it is before you public public record.
Yeah, it's at the very beginning of the agenda pages, right after the actual agenda.
It's page seven.
I don't have the whole background.
Okay, your mind.
So um
No, we don't either. It but you should have it.
Yeah, it's fine.
Oh sure, um there there's an additional packet I think in the mail. I'll
Okay. Well, it's okay. Somebody can read it, but we can't.
Yeah, she's she's
I could read it if you like, but it's a one-page resolution.
Okay.
Thank you, Lino.
Read it, it's okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you, Lino.
Thank you.
Give me a second, here. Holly, you should just have it.
Uh sorry. Thank you.
Alright, uh does anyone have any more questions for Lino on this?
No, I don't.
Okay.
No.
Otherwise, I do note that Lori Morton has joined us.
Okay, alright. Good evening, Lori. So uh thank you for joining us for this discussion. Uh so we'll turn to the B A B bench plaque policy.
Aye.
And we have Lori Morton here with us to start. Jill, do you would you like to start first or?
Up up to Lori. Lori, do you wanna start and walk us through this a little bit or?
Lori.
Of course, give you a brief intro. I think that um
Or just intro.
The B A B had founded a memorial bench program and um have had been administering it for a number of years in partnership with the town.
Bought it. That had been in partnership with the town.
And then during COVID, I think the town had had taken it over exclusively. But what
Then exclusively, but what
the town, you're facing was that um there wasn't a clear process that was available on the town website.
The challenge you're facing was that there wasn't a clear process that was available on the town website.
And um in in the really close statistic, a clear process for doing it period.
And there wasn't a clear process for doing it period.
So um so what we endeavored to do was to um work with Christina who also worked with the current vendor
So um so what we endeavored to do was to um work with Christina who also worked with the current vendor
to have map out a um process fitness that um that could work for the town staff, could work for the vendor
process fitness that
and took a lot of the ambiguity out of the process for families that were looking to dedicate bench.
process for families that were to dedicate bench.
So um so what we have shared with the town board is essentially draft uh cover letter in form
So um so what we have shared with the town board is essentially draft uh cover letter in form
um that put Olivia link on the town website to take some of the ambiguity out of that process.
leave the link on the town website to take some of the ambiguity out of that process. Okay.
Right, and what we've also been able to do is uh we were able to um uh secure um the vendor, the original vendor for the benches. Uh we have one in stock at the moment. We're gonna order another five. Um we are going to standardize the uh brass plates that are on the benches. It's gonna be actually four by eight. Um the bench up in front of Lang's that has the dedication to Mr. Lang on it is gonna be the the template going forward. Um we thought it was a a good combination between the three by good compromise between the three by fives that were a little small and some of the larger ones that just made it impossible to sit on the bench. So um I think all in all, we we hit I we hit a sweet spot on it. Um and of course, uh we really appreciate B A B and Lori taking and just sort of memorializing the steps. So it makes it clear um for everybody. And uh yeah, we're very um you know with with the board's permission, I don't think it requires any heavy duty action from the board. We will take and post this to our website and we've got the pricing. We were a little concerned about that. It's gonna be um twenty five hundred dollars, which will cover the brass plaque and the larger back brass plaque and the bench. Um and so we'll be good to go with it. Okay?
So basically there is now a form that people fill out?
Yes.
You know, consistent form. Um
It's a uniform look.
They email the completed form to the town clerk. They will receive email acknowledgement within a week. So these are all I I like like how the timing is very well delineated here. Um then the town, then who approves? The town board approves or who would approve?
So
There's upon upon town approval, it says. So who is that an administrative approval or what do you anticipate?
Yeah, sorry, we We didn't map out what um what the backend would necessarily look like. We got, you know, we got the
We didn't
what the backend would necessarily look like. We got
you know, we got the basic part of that sorted out, I think, and expected
basic part of that sorted out, I think. Right.
more.
So that's for us to
No. By I put on the location of the bench and at least a look at the wording. Um but I think that between, you know, we can handle this administratively.
and at least a look at the wording. But I think that between, you know, we can handle this administratively.
Um I don't think there needs to be a formality to it. I think just uh visibility to folks to care about it is helpful, but
Is that something?
to it, I think just uh visibility to folks to care about it.
helpful, but really only wanna have uh the town clerk's office be the point of contact for the families.
really only wanna
be the point of contact for the families.
Okay, at some point, does the town board get involved in the benches? Not usually, no.
Of the benches, yeah.
Um unless it's a unless it's a location that we hadn't really considered. And frankly, the location of the benches is dictated by A D A compliance to make sure that the sidewalks remain wide enough um for clear passage. Um
Mm-hmm.
I'm less concerned about location than I am that the the dedication is an appropriate dedication.
I think I think we should be informed at the very least if not um
But it would
uh having to approve it. There may come a time when we might want to approve it for for various reasons.
Okay.
It's hard to tell what the future holds, but
I have to do through through
not that I wanna create more work for us, and I think you're perfectly
Yeah, I'm I'm trying to figure out how many years this program has been in existence, Lori, but it's it's gotta be twenty.
Yeah, a couple decades.
It's yeah, okay.
Okay.
I feel like our administrators would alert us if there was any questionable submissions, right? I I would like to think if there was anything we needed to know, we would know, you know?
Right, but I think just But just as a matter of interest, it's good good for us to know that the town that the benches are have been it's a it's a wonderful thing to do and um
Um uh Happy happy to share with the board, yes.
I I think it we should acknowledge it.
Sure.
Um
Okay. So if people want to apply for this, where exactly on the website is it? Where will they find this? Is it under the B A B garage? It's gonna be all under the town clerk's office. Oh, okay. And the B A B
I think I think we would post the link in a couple of places. It would all link to the same forum with the same process, but people could then find
post a link in it would all link to the same forum with the same process, but people could then find
the K P page. They could find it on the town forums page. They could find it on the clerk's page. Um I think it
they could find it on the town forums page. They could find it on the clerk's page.
are there to be a little redundancy anywhere the link lists and you know also like the K P could show the link on their social media. The supervisors report can have the link in it.
redundancy anywhere the link lists and you know also like of their social media. The supervisor's report could have the link in it when launched the new process.
Yep, I I agree.
Yes. Okay.
Um right, and Vicky was actually, you know, reading the um the outline. And what's nice is that we will let the family know
Thank you.
that they will be receiving a proof within certain amount of time.
Right, right.
And then after the proof is approved, then they can expect the installation two to three months. And that's basically because if it's the dead of winter, we're not we're just not gonna be able to do it. So
Right.
this way we build in a little bit
Yep.
The other thing it would kinda have is that the family would be notified when it was in place.
is that the family notified when it was in place.
Right. It it's great that there's consistency and predictability for people who are um applying for this. Um and uh Lori, thank you to you and the B A B for thinking about making this consistent, making it make sense and taking the time to to do this. Um you made it look simple, but it really wasn't that simple going through it. So um
I'm for us as well.
Yeah, thank you very much for for working on this.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lori.
Thank you so much, Lori.
And sor- sorry about the timing. Yes. She's 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 set on the day. She she understands that.
Okay. Very good.
Our our delicate timing on this though. Um if it's okay with the board, I'll turn to the administrative vice.
Yes, yes.
Okay. We start out with a retroactive payment of claims with our checks dated October eighteenth. Next is the adoption of minutes from September twenty twenty four and the adoption of monthly reports also from September of twenty twenty four. Um uh Bard is seeking authorization to extend the contract bid for D P W, the sidewalk uh snow removal for the Chapala Hamlet parking district. That's with with the landscaping. We've been very pleased with them for the past couple of years. We're seeking to extend it for another year. Um we're seeking to uh piggyback onto other New York State County bids for pipelining. Uh this is a continuation of the water improvement projects that Bard's been doing in the downtown area. Uh next is uh authorization again to piggyback onto Omni Partners bid for the purchase of uh one of the heat pumps. And this is for the uh installation at the upper room at Amsterdam. Um we uh we need to uh purchase um three additional light fixtures for the Chapala Hamlet. Our beautiful decorative light fixtures downtown um get hit on a somewhat regular basis. And uh we keep a a stock of them on hand to be able to replace them. Um we are accepting uh vehicle auction results. Thank you, Jeremy. Um and we are seeking to declare surplus on uh two different uh old pieces of equipment uh at D P W. Um we have authorization to accept an ozone upgrade for the primary disinfectant system at the Millwood Water Treatment Plant. Authorization to approve additional construction, basically supervision ser- service yeah services for D P W. This is for the uh water main replacement on Pine Cliff and Meadowlands. Those project, those two water main installations are wrapping up. Um the uh the old main is being capped um and there's going to be um paving. I think they started on Monday. Um and the weather has really been working in our favor. So those projects are gonna be done shortly. So this is just some additional um inspection services for the full-time inspections that we have. Um looking ahead to our ski trips, um in the winter, uh authorization to use town vehicle from uh from recreation. The chaperone, we have one chaperone drive separately in a town car and follow the buses to make sure that uh having forbid anybody gets hurt or gets carsick, that uh they have some relief off the bus. Um authorization to accept uh to release rather the cash maintenance bond agreement for the drainage improvements on uh Lamoney. Um authorization to accept uh cash bond agreement for sixteen Ridge Hollow Road. Um authorization um for the performance bond reductions. This is for East Village. Um as uh construction continues and more and more work gets done, infrastructure work gets done, we're able to uh release the performance bonds, which was guaranteeing that the work was actually done. The next has to do with uh Civic Plus um and the um um agreement for credit card services. Um we um we went out to bid for new H V A C uh maintenance agreement. Uh our contract with Westchester Atlantic was up. Unfortunately, the low apparent bidder was unable to meet the insurance requirements and so requested permission to withdraw their bid. And um uh we have a new contract award agreement with Westchester Atlantic. Uh next is to accept a proposal for plans and specifications for the recycling parks garage. Um it's come to our attention that um there is some structural work that needs to be done on the garage. Um some rehabilitation work. So um Watzke is gonna be assisting us in that regard. We've got authorization to use town property. That's um Aditash Street. They're gonna be having a wonderful um Halloween type block party. What a fun group. And we're gonna have ask for authorization to set a public hearing for um an amendment to the ethics um if you will. And that's for November twenty second of twenty four. Does anyone have any questions on the administrative vice? Any questions?
No, thank you, Jill.
Okay.
So that is it for the work session. We have a motion to adjourn our work session and open up the town board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so uh we are officially now at the town board meeting. And uh let's see, Jill, do you have any announcements or Christina?
Um are are you gonna be including um in your supervisor's report our uh change of email?
I will be. Do you wanna talk about that?
Yeah, um so just just very briefly, um about uh ten years ago, the town changed its email addresses from town dot new hyphen castle dot U N Y dot U S. It was a little long and cumbersome to mynewcastle dot org. Um for security reasons, the county has asked all of the its municipalities to change to a dot gov um email address. So the town of Newcastle on the on February, I'm all right, on um November fourteenth will be
That's a Friday, right?
It's it's a Friday. We'll we'll be switching over to a new email extension. And it's gonna be mynewcastle N Y dot gov.
A Friday, right.
Just to let you
It'll forward regardless. It'll forward.
Hmm? It will absolutely forward regardless regardless of um you know, if you're still using our old one, you'll see it. You'll you'll see that it goes through. You can test it now. It should be working. Um but if you you're gonna notice that emails from town staff starting the end of this week, we'll start having uh little notifications on our signature blocks notifying people of the new extensions and we'll slowly but surely roll this out. But because everything will forward, the public isn't really gonna see much of a a change one way or the other. It's just that at some point, we will switch over completely.
So is this like phase one of a process? Cause I'm trying to understand. You said it's for
Yes.
security and if it's being forwarded? How does it work?
The Um Rob would really be the person to 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 give those answers. He's uh
Okay.
um otherwise engaged tonight. Um but yeah, I'll be he'll be able to take and explain it. And there's, you know, some discussion about it, but unless we have the dot gov, there are gonna be certain uh county applications that we are not going to be able to access. And so once they put it that way,
We're doing it.
we say no problem, we're doing it. So
Okay, so it may
Yeah, I know that
But that that makes sense, actually.
Other municipalities have been doing this for the same reasons, for for matters of security. The dot uh dot gov domain is just deemed
Yes.
Right.
more secure, less prone to hacking. Um I don't know the technical details of why that is.
I I couldn't yeah, couldn't help it.
But um that's that's the thing.
J- just so that the board is aware and will again, this will be a slow, painless rollout for the public. So
Yes.
Okay, just wanna make you aware. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jill. Anything else for announcements?
Maybe if I if you'll mind about the early voting.
Oh yeah, please.
Okay.
Just um I wanted to remind everyone that early voting starts this weekend. Uh the closest locations for us are Mount Kisco, Pawcell, Austinine, and Rocktown. The full list of locations with the hours is on our website. I think it I believe it was also in the newsletter this past week. But do check cause the hours are different on weekends and all throughout. But it starts um this week the twenty sixth and goes straight through to November third.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christina.
Very important information. Thank you, Christina.
Definitely.
Okay. And of my supervisor's report, I wanna thank Ike and his whole team for the ragamuffin parade on Saturday. Unfortunately, this year I was not able to go, but I will make a point of being here next year. Um but we will have all the pictures the town newsletter and it was it looked like it was a lot of fun and there were a lot of um happy kids and great costumes there.
The the weather was spectacular.
It was a a beautiful, beautiful weekend. Um I also wanna thank the Holocaust and Human Rights Committee for their Neighbors Bench Program. That was very successful. People uh were there and it was an opportunity for uh neighbors to get to know each other better and sit on the bench and have good conversation and uh ways to connect are are so important. So I wanna thank them and I know that they're doing a next neighbors bench in November. Ally, you're the liaison. Do you know what um that date might be?
I should have it right now.
I'll have it in the newsletter and we'll we will talk about it, but it will be sometime um in November. Also, the Committee on Inclusion and Belonging had a story exchange program last night. Um there were about sixteen people in attendance. Jen was there with me. And um it was again another opportunity for people to meet neighbors and we had um it was a structured process uh based on um an existing program that's applied to organizations and schools. And people paired up and had um really meaningful but short conversations with one another, um adhering to prompts, different prompts. But it was such a wonderful experience and an opportunity again to um really get to know people in our community. Jen, I don't know if you wanna add anything to that?
Yeah, well, I I do wanna thank the Committee on Inclusion and Belonging. Um it was a really great event, so enjoyable. Um I think we all felt really great at the end. It's really a listening program. Um and you just sort of listen to your partner tell sort of a narrative story about themselves. And then you take their um persona and you reflect it to um the audience listening. And it's just a beautiful way to get to know your neighbors um in a in just a collaborative and easy way. Um so by the end of the evening, you feel like you know each other a lot better. Really nice.
Yes. Um okay, so there'll be another and uh I'll we'll be announcing the dates. Uh we're not quite sure.
Yeah, I encourage everyone to participate. It's just so much fun.
Um I wanna go back to the neighbors bench. The next one will be on November second, which is a Saturday, at the farmer's market from ten AM to twelve PM. Okay, and I also want to announce that tomorrow is A O K Day in the town of Newcastle. A O K stands for Acts of Kindness. This was um uh an event brought about by a resident, Evy Rosen, who uh organized this back in twenty seventeen. And she wanted to bring it back again. You know, after COVID, things got a little um you know strange and different, but now that we're back to normal, she thought of bringing it back and I thought it was a fantastic idea. And she uh partnered with our new committee on mental resilience. And um so A O K Day in Newcastle is tomorrow, um October twenty third. And although I have to say that every day is an a day where we should all perform acts of kindness, but it's uh kind of nice to have an organized date around it. So everyone focuses on it. And uh all it takes is, you know, smi- a smile at someone. It could be as little as that. Just holding a door or buying someone a cup of coffee, or if you know someone who's ill, bringing them dinner. It could be small or big. But as long as you do a little something, um it it just makes uh life in town a little better for everyone. So I hope everybody participates and uh and uh maybe we'll get some some uh feedback about what it was like on October twenty third in the town of Newcastle.
Hmm.
Uh I think that's it for announcements. Anyone on the board have anything to announce? Okay. Um Jill, do you wanna have a town administrator's report?
Um no, I'm gonna hold mine. I'm gonna um defer to 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 Dan who's been reading here patiently.
Okay. Well, that's the next that's that's that comes next. So today we are
Yes.
really pleased to welcome Dan Welsh, who is the Program Director for Sustainable Westchester, who is here to talk to us about um Westchester Power, which is the default energy program for Newcastle. Uh which we have been involved with for how many years, Jill?
Dan, help me out. How many years have we been
That would be eight years now.
Eight, wow.
Eight years.
Yeah.
And there are twenty eight municipalities in Westchester who are
Twenty nine going on
Is it twenty nine? It keeps changing a little bit.
Twenty nine going on twenty six actually.
Okay, I'll take your word for that.
It's a little bit low.
It's the new math.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll go we'll go with that. Let me see. So I shall. Okay. Okay, well, thanks for having me again. And thanks for all the um the active collaboration that the board and the town have uh engaged in with us to try and make sure that folks who are participating in the program and not participating are are aware of it and know about the details and have all the information they need to make their their choices. I'll go through this really quickly. North Castle doesn't need to be told about, you know, the urgency of the
Newcastle.
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 Yes, we we know that you know.
Everybody.
Yes. This is the one time when newer is better. I bet your home residents do that sometimes too, but but they're not them. Um you you guys have been doing this for a couple decades. In fact, I just seen today that your your original climate action plan goes back to two thousand eleven, which is before a lot of towns even knew that such thing existed. The trends keep going in the wrong direction. We all know that. The hottest days last summer and and all the rest of that. Uh there's a little piece of trivia I threw in just to capture some of the the attention of some of the audience. And that is we often hear that that we're trying to keep the global warming within two degrees. What does that mean? It doesn't sound like a big deal at all, like a little two degrees warmer, but it's that's heating up the entire planet by two degrees. So that comes out to roughly fourteen trillion kilowatt hours worth of energy. So it's not it's not so much just like oh, two degrees. It's not a big deal. It's that amount of energy to heat the entire planet up. And that's why the the storms and all that get get that much more um uh vigorous and and damaging. So everybody's used to these kind of pictures that they're seeing now. And why is that again in a way? Not sure. I'm not sure where that line, these things are there. Okay, well, I'll talk through it. Um and of course, it's about the greenhouse gases and where do they come from? We're talking about the residential energy sector. Something the way I shared it or something. Is something on your screen? Is there anything else that you have open on the computer? I don't think so. We could skip. Close the browser. Cause I'm I'm well or just try sharing it again. It's the PowerPoint. Start this here and try it again. Just a chair. It's a chair here. And this one. That is weird. Okay. Not too sure. Um no. Is the presentation on here? Alright. It's not. That's the that's the uh Do you have a thumb drag? Um I do not, but can we at least minimize this? How about that?
Oh.
Well.
It's a little better.
Alright, I I I I think we'll get get through it, let's not waste everybody's time with this. Um Greenhouse gases, it's the residential sector, so residential electricity is a big big chunk and it's getting bigger because of all the electrification we're doing, you go to heat pumps and all the rest of that. We're doing our work within the framework of the state goals and our local goals. And part of that entails getting together and trying to do it together because we're we're more able to uh collect our resources and do bigger and better things by coming together. So that's what Sustainable Westchester is about, to shared service. We got a uh we just we just celebrated our tenth anniversary actually. And um and actually roots go back even further than that, we've got a whole portfolio of programming, which is directed at at trying to uh make headway on these energy problems. And and uh the the town has participated very actively in those. Westchester Power is kind of the bedrock program of the of the portfolio in that it's the actual renewable energy supply. And that, as we just said, has been uh in operation two since two thousand sixteen, now eight eight years. It's the first in New York State. And of course, again, it's about bringing our collective resources to bear on on this problem of transitioning to renewable energy. Uh we do that with fixed rate products and it helps to drive more activity, more investment in the community around around this through the through the municipalities and through grants and the committee activity. Uh key features of the program, it is an opt-out program, so it becomes basically the new default supply for the municipality in the instead of the the utility. Utility remains the responsible for the for all the infrastructure to deliver the power to you, but this is uh becomes the new power supply uh by default. Uh it has consumer-friendly characteristics in that you can opt out and opt in at at any time. And uh this kind of education outreach is a big part of that as well. We usually have more than one supply option. And it's very important to know, because it's a fixed price, we can't guarantee savings and typically for renewable energy, there's some some premium that's involved. But we never know because we don't know what the future utility rates are going to be, they're they're uh completely um uh variable. Uh we just started to have the participation. Uh we reached twenty-nine municipalities when Yonkers came in. We are losing a couple, we lose a couple of um uh NICE communities this round. And Mount Kisco, unfortunately, where our where our headquarters is. But we'll still have twenty-six municipalities and we're gonna be still pretty close to that hundred forty thousand number because it's been been growing. Again, just for the basics, because hopefully uh folks in the audience are are uh trying to figure this all out. It's about the supply as opposed to the infrastructure. And supply is a matter of figuring out who you want to pay to drop energy into the grid for you, right? It's by buying clean energy or you're uh saying I wanna pay these clean energy generators uh to increase the amount of renewable energy that's going into the grid. And if you're in the program or if you're with any uh energies, non non Con Ed energy supplier, your bill will look something like this. You'll see the name of the supplier on this page too. In our case, it's Constellation. And you'll see the 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 little note there also talks about Westchester Power, so that's the way to recognize that. If you're with Con Ed, then you won't have that, everything will just say Con Ed, Con Ed. Uh sometimes people see this in the and they they see the summary on the front page and they think, oh, this is an additional charge. But it's in lieu of Con Ed default supply when you're when you're with the program. Um so again, just an overview, it's about increasing amount of clean energy, adding choices and providing a kind of an insurance policy because you have a a cap price, you don't have to ever pay any more than that. Uh in terms of that environmental impact, you guys have seen this chart before, but the annual carbon mitigation for twenty twenty-three was over three hundred thirty thousand tons, metric tons of carbon. That's significant. Uh and you see the the uh conversion to more readily understandable measures there, seventy-nine thousand gas-powered cars behind that black block there. And another way of looking at it is uh the DEC is now looking very uh strongly at incorporating the social cost of carbon into its measures so that we can understand you're doing this. It may not be directly connected in the transaction, but that cost does come back around to you and it has a very specific value. Of course, that number is not accurate to the dollar place, but we took the the numbers out of the DEC um workbook for that and converted, so. Again, in terms of uh um providing additional choice, before you have a a CCA in your municipality, you basically are with the utility. And then if you wanna try something else, you have to go out and search for your own ESCO supply. With the Community Choice Aggregation, Westchester Power, you now have that as a default. And you still have those other choices, you can go back to the utility or you can go out and if you think you can find something more to your liking in the deprived uh sector and and be with an ESCO there. Um this is just a visual on on the cap. In terms of fixed price versus versus variable, that's pretty pretty uh obvious as far as it goes. And another important part, of course, what we do is what we're here today for and and all the outreach that we've done uh is to basically raise awareness, so even if people don't end up staying in the program, at least they've they've been more exposed to this stuff. And there's only gonna be more of it in terms of the complications in the energy industry and 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 what we're calling on consumers to do, just a little daunting, but we're start so we're starting to do that work by engaging folks with that. And we're trying to increase, of course, our bilingual capabilities, we do have in-house staff for that. And we're holding Spanish sessions and doing that with other our other programs as well, so that's a that's a high priority for us. So here's the new contract. We uh I'll show you the dates and everything uh for what we've been through in a moment, but uh so the new contract, the default rate for Newcastle is based on the hundred percent renewable uh product. So that means if you don't make any choices, that's what you'll be enrolled in. If you wanna do something else, if you wanna opt out or you you say, okay, I wanna do something environmental, but I I wanna back off a little bit and watch watch my cost. There is a fifty percent renewable supply, which is still very impactful and you can switch over to that. And uh you'll see later on the different ways you can do that. And that contract is starting in a few days. That means that any of the customers who were in the program and haven't opted out to now will will then get basically the new pricing. There's not kind of a it's the same supplier this time, they the same supplier once, so there there's not you they won't get the uh re-enrollment notice from Con Ed that you often get with a change of supplier. But you will have the the new price will take take effect uh with the starting with the first meter read date uh for an individual customer in uh in uh November. Uh it's a thirteen-month contract, so it goes until November thirty for next year. And um got a little more information there on the trailing twelve-month average, that was also in the opt-out letter. Uh that was nine point six cents, that's saying looking back twelve months, that's what the average Con Ed rate was. Uh that that recently changed, it's up to nine nine. And actually, if you look at today's uh price for the for the month, the date, it's up at about eleven cents, so it's starting to starting to rise up. Uh and we have the previous contract rates and the call-out over on the right there, so we've come down a couple of cents on that, so we're happy about that. And if you, these prices still, they're still a premium versus what we see with Con Ed. They are, however, looking very competitive versus other comparable offers. So if you go out and look for ESCO supply for a hundred percent renewable, this this pricing is gonna be at the the bottom of what you see there. So we check we check around these rates every month.
And can you just tell me, that's gone up and down in the uh since twenty sixteen, hasn't it? I mean, there were times when uh Westchester Power was very competitive with Con Ed.
Oh yeah, yeah.
So it's been
Yes.
it it hasn't been consistently higher. Is that right? I mean, you're you tell.
I would say the past couple of years, it's been consistently higher. The previous contract though, we we killed it, you know, we were like the rates were shooting up on Con Ed and we were locked in at like seven something and you know, we did very well.
Right, I just want people to know that even though you're going to be slightly higher this year, we first of all, we can't tell where Con Ed is going to go.
That's right.
They seem to be on an upward trajectory. Um so it might end up being lower, but I
Yeah. Yeah.
I just want people to know that you have been lower in the past, so it's not been um this way consistently.
Yes, that's true.
Yeah.
And and the the market rates or the utility rates tend to follow a pattern, but you know, you have to be care everything's everything's subject to, you know, whatever happens in the world, but wintertime rates tend to go up. Then in the springtime, you get a drop-off again, then they then they tend to go up again in the summer. So could be very likely that we'll be comparable or competitive with with Con Ed, even with our renewable during the winter. And then during the springtime, might drop off. And if people wanna you wanna sort of uh look at that, they can they can stay with the program and then watch what happens in the spring, it's an option, you know?
Do you think that your higher rates over the last few years were con contributing to why those few municipalities withdrew from Sustainable Westchester? Did did they have reasons why the program wasn't working for them?
Yeah, that there was pressure from that, but then uh for at least a couple of them, it was just because they from the start had um defaulted to the standard product. And if you recall, I said um this year, we are not, we can't offer a standard product because the new regulation that the DPS uh enacted, which says you can only offer a non-renewable product if your price is no more than five percent over the trailing average. So that means if you are coming out of a low period in the market and things are heading up, your bidders are not gonna outbid that trailing average cause it's it's low, you know? So so we're in that kind of a market right now, so we're not able to offer that that standard product. Which, you know, as Sustainable Westchester, we're not heartbroken about, but it was something that that some municipalities found to be a good place to be. But when with that going away, they they like it, it kinda didn't make sense. We've had other municipalities in the in the past who when kind of confronting this, they decide, you know what? We're either in it or we're not, and they moved to the hundred percent renewable. And you know, when you go there, then you just wanna make sure that everybody is as as much as possible aware of of you know what their choices are and everything.
So that actually brings me to my next point, is that I think the most common feedback we get from residents is that they didn't know that it's an opt-out. Right, and I think the preference for some of our residents would be that it would be an opt-in if they wanted to participate. So I would want to make sure to avoid future confusion and question that our residents know what the 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 contract is coming up, the new enrollment period is coming up and how that's being communicated to residents and
Right.
new residents too who don't don't know that we participate.
Right. And new residents would um wouldn't come in automatically, like when they call up Con Ed and say, hook up my power. They come in in batches, Con Ed sends us every four months, they send us a new batch of the new accounts. And then they go through that same, you know, opt-out letter process. We hold we hold uh sessions that they can attend if they want to, or that's all that's in the letter and everything. But you know, we wanna we wanna make it noisy and have the and have people aware of it, so we're open to whatever channels. And you'll see, I'll have a uh I'll show you what we've been doing this this year, and I think we have raised the level quite a bit. Uh just just quickly to finish off like the the details of the current contract, we just finished the opt-out period, as I said. And uh November first is the nominal start of the new contract. We do have a a newly eligible mailing, which is right right behind it, which is uh these kind of customers that we just talked about. And uh those customers have just got their their opt-out letters and their enrollment would start December first. Uh so uh there's, let me go. And this is, you know, this is the the same letter format basically that everybody's seen for the original opt-out. And it is a look it is text savvy and we've I've whined about this letter in front of you before. It's it's determined by the the uh the DPS. So we wanna, you know, go over and above as much as we can. Uh it does include all the instructions for for any of the changes that you wanna make and
But I just just to be clear, people, even though there's this enrollment period and this opt-out period, people can still opt in and out anytime.
Yes, yes, thus the sorry, the uh the footnote there. That the it sounds with the thirty nine thirty-day opt-out period, that sounds kind of drastic and like, oh no, after thirty days, I'm I'm stuck.
No.
Not at all, it's just meant to have a block of time wherein if you opt out at that point, you will never have enrolled, in this case in the new in the new contract or for the new for the newly eligible folks. You know, they'll stay with Con Ed at that point. If they go beyond, they may get enrolled, but they can opt back out again, just
And and folks that have that are currently enrolled and do not opt out are actually gonna notice that their price is gonna be lower with the new contract.
That's right, yeah, it's going down a couple of cents, so, right. Um yeah, so uh newly eligible mailing, they're they're getting this form, they'll get all the instructions. Sorry about the numbers there, when you go from Google to PowerPoint, it messes up your numbers. This is just to um uh do a little look back at what we've done this year. And uh so we we started back in March to sort of warm things up, so we visited you in March. Uh we made a presentation also here in June. We did an in-person um information session at the Chapua Library in August. We have the the virtual sessions, uh post award sessions uh and offer them both lunchtime and noon and and nighttime because for some people, they like to do it with a bag lunch, and like for other people, they're too busy to do that. Um and uh we also had the Spanish session and of course tonight. And then uh already this coming Wednesday, we have a couple of sessions for for the newly eligible, but anybody can can go. And I I noticed that you guys posted that uh I think on your
Yeah, I posted it all on the newsletter and uh yeah, that's precisely I was going to to give a list of the dates that you have up here
Looks, yeah, that's right. Oh.
Because you know, the communication to our residents is so important. And as people can see, and this this year alone, we've had, I'm I'm counting seven or eight sessions
We've here. Yeah.
um throughout the year and it's been in the newsletter. Um but you know, somehow people still are not aware, so we we will just continue to work on this.
Absolutely.
But I would say eight sessions in a year is is pretty good, you know, in person and virtual. So we're we're putting a priority, yeah.
Right, and I'm sorry, you're the yeah, that that doesn't count the letters that go out from Sustainable Westchester. So there was a letter that went out maybe September, October, is it, no, Sep- September?
We did have the opt-out, the opt-out letter.
Yeah, just explaining to everybody that there was gonna be a new contract and that you had the right to opt out and
Yeah. Yes, yes.
I've got it sitting on my desk, but
Yeah, then and we also did a postcard to everybody that is going back about ten months or something, but during this year, there's been quite a lot of flow
Right, right.
and we've been in kind of the like the online newspapers and things like that.
Right.
But you know, if you have other media channels that that you think are are good to get out there. And certainly, it's always good to go where people are, so if there are events where people are gonna be, you want us to table or or uh or
Yeah, you know, if you could leave us with maybe a stack of of flyers that
Oh yeah, we did that, I I didn't put that here, but we did distribute flyers and put them in the
have a good Yeah.
the library and and places like that, so yeah, we we we're happy to do that. We actually have to have to update the, we have this like rap card that we that we do, so we'll update that and
Yeah, so that communication really has been a priority for us, um and and we'll keep making it so.
Yeah.
And I also think um I know you guys weren't at Community Day, but you might think about that for next year cause it's got a lot, it's got great attendance.
Sure, sure.
Um
Um we we love
But I think the SAB had a lot of information on this, I I'm
They may have, they've been they've been great, you know.
Yeah, I I don't know that they specifically address Sustainable Westchester.
Yeah.
Um and Sustainable Westchester is one of the the neck position.
Okay.
You should make sure they they have like toolkit for hand, that they can just pop out on the table when they
Well, we 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 should make sure for next year, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
when they go, yeah. Um yeah, I mean, we love to do those things.
Yeah.
We, you know, we try to keep our eye out and but if you can let us know when they're when they're happening, we'll
We will, yes.
Yeah, good.
I should go with it and table it back.
Yeah, and so all those are all, you know, posted.
Dan, I was curious, how was the attend the attendance at some of those sessions you held?
Um it's trailed, you know, we've been doing this for a long time, so it has trailed off, so sometimes it's just two or three. Sometimes four, if you know, seven or eight, we'd be like, man, that's not bad, you know, yeah, right?
Were they were they recorded?
Um we we did record a couple of them, I it we
Did the library record them? Jill, do you know if NCC TV?
Yeah, the
So the library didn't, we recorded the one on the twenty-sixth, the one on June fourth. The library was not recorded because I don't think they have the uh the ability to do that.
Okay, so can we send a link to those to those videos?
Um sure, we've yeah, we've Um sure, we've yeah, we've got them, we've got Dan's presentation, we've also got uh
Oh, you've recorded tonight?
Yeah.
We're recording tonight, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could probably snip out.
Sure.
Like the first part I did was pretty tight and
Right, but if there's already there's a snippet already.
Yeah, that over.
Yeah, so this PowerPoint did we, yeah, maybe um what what Vicki does really effectively is she's able to uh you know do a link to the PowerPoint and that goes in her supervisor's report.
Yeah, that's that would be helpful.
So we happened, you know, on our to-do list is to do a clean version
That would.
without all the you know the 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 back and forth so we can really tighten it up just like in studio version.
Mm-hmm.
So when we get that we'll we'll pass that on, we're also thinking maybe like
Wait, you mean a video?
Yeah, I mean we can we can basically run these PowerPoints, you know record over them and turn them into videos.
Or or the
So tha- that's easy enough to do and maybe and also in my mind I've been like maybe I could take this and cut it into like two minute blocks.
Mm-hmm.
So you know it's people like sitting through a ten minute video, maybe yeah, but minute and a half, two minutes
It's tough.
And.
like you know what is the renewal there, what is this program, cut out a little block so that they can
But for now, if you could just um give me a copy of that of this presentation
You must.
Yeah.
that would be if that's okay with you.
And you'll get it with those like blocks hopefully and.
Um I can.
Dan Dan, I think you've also done
Wait just a second, I'm sorry, wait can I get it without
Yeah, 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 there no, this is I'm kidding this.
Okay, I J- c- if you can send it to me, you know soon, cause the newsletter will go out on Thursday, I think.
That's it.
That's yeah. Yeah, I'll get it tonight.
Okay, okay, thanks, go ahead.
You um or someone from Sustainable Westchester participated in the podcast with the sustainability advisor?
There's that's tomorrow I think, no no our our uh our executive directors.
Our team.
Okay, so
So we got a lot of activity with you because.
So yeah, but I think that would be something that we should feature in the newsletter too after that's released.
Yeah, that may be. Mm-hmm. They'll probably cover like broader ground but also this I expect but yeah, so we'll make all those resources available.
Yeah.
Great.
If you can help push them out, that's great.
We thank you, Dan.
It's good. Um so that's that covers most of it, I wanted to ah darn. Throw this in here just um just uh as a as a plug, in November we've got this uh jobs fair, clean clean energy jobs fair that we're working on with the with the county, so that's on our on our website. You know it's worth pushing that out too for folks who are thinking they might wanna get involved in this this side of things. There's also going to be a um and I couldn't find that, I don't know that we've locked in all the information. There's gonna be a battery storage workshop, you know uh bulk battery storage with nicer to fire safety experts and everything. Hot topic these days and we we wanna contribute to you know municipalities being able to sort through that and get to where they wanna be on that with with all the input, so that's that's something that's coming in November as well. Um yeah, that's what I got.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very helpful as always, thank you for taking the time to come here, I know you go to many municipalities, so I really we appreciate it, thanks for the for all the work.
I learned a lot. I learned a lot.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Have our support.
Oh, the dot gov thing, I I think part of it is because it's harder um for people to to uh to uh what's the word when they pretend to be be you, cause it's hard it's hard to sign up for a dot gov account unless you're legit.
Spooked.
Mm-hmm.
Fishing.
Spooked.
Oh.
Okay.
So it's not necessarily so much that you don't get hacked, except people won't want spoofed.
Free.
It hacked from our email, okay.
Uh.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good to know.
Thank you.
All right. And uh okay, now we've reached the public comment period. Um anyone with a public comment can please come up? Go up to the microphone and identify yourself and make your comment and then we'll go to anyone who might be online after.
I'm not a daily, I'm not a short piece. Okay, uh can can you hear me? Okay, uh um my name is Karen Basic, I'm with Newcastle Health E R Pollinator Pathway
Yes.
and a board member of the Chapco Garden Club. And um I'm here cause I have this quote that said if you see something wrong, if you speak out, you can change it, which was from Ethel Kennedy. But that doesn't really pertain to any of you actually because you're all going to help me and that's why I'm here tonight to thank you. First, thank you to the town for the irrigation system at the pocket park.
Yes.
It has been a life changer for us. I'm one of the volunteers that works under Judy and we're there every Thursday. And uh you may have noticed we've had a heat wave and also a drought for about a month. And a lot of those plants would have been, we would have had to drag buckets or hoses and it's it's really made a huge difference, so thank you.
So glad, yeah.
We really appreciate the investment.
Happy.
And uh I'm also here to thank Dennis publicly, I thanked him privately
Yeah.
but I wanna thank him for his um dedication to the town and the trees and sustaining, I think it was a five hour testimony because it meant a lot to a lot of us. Because um we I was fortunate to work on the uh of the tree code uh group and we spent a lot of time trying to find ways to protect the trees in town while allowing people to maintain the ability to for safety. So it's very tough work and it's easy for people and that's one of the reasons I'm here today. Something that happened, but I wanna thank the town because of your work. Uh we have the B city approval and our town is recognized as someone who protects the pollinators. We're also a town that's a tree city, we can have that sign up to protect the trees. We're also a town that took the monarch pledge which um you don't know this but I wrote about all of this in a grant that was won at the library in order to plant uh to further uh pollinator garden at the library. But unfortunately, as things are, that things um there's always a struggle with these things. Um I am not Mister Byrne who used to love to read children's books, but I had to bring this one with me. Cause if you know Mister Byrne, the principal at Roenbrook, he used to read children's books and sometimes parents would say wow. But this this book I per uh purchased for the library, um Millie Flure's Poison Garden. I found it and thought it was so perfect because I think so much of the work that you've done has advocated and I'm just gonna show you read which nobody from any of the committees I'm on knows I'm here doing this, so it just says Garden Glen was a place of sameness. Prim pastel houses, each one like the next, lined the streets of Garden Glen like candies in a box. Their windows were spotless, their hedges perfectly pruned, their shutters hung straight and true. Every house and yard in Garden Glen was flawless with not a blade of grass out of place. And I think for many people that is the goal. And um through the story, this little girl comes and changes the whole town. And um her name is Millie Flure. And Garden Glen was forever transformed by Millie Flure's strange and magnificent garden. Through the windows were still though the windows were still spotless and the shutters still hung straight, the yards were once identical that were once identical now sprouted unique personalities, making Garden Glen a truly one of a kind place. And it's a sweet story about how important it is that what you've been promoting is important. And uh we've been working in the town, in the gardens, um in the pocket park we put in some milkweed which we hope will attract the butterflies as well as cone flowers. Um we have planted in the the um we we have plans, thank you for approvals of civic improvement plans. And also I've been working at the library, which unfortunately sadly today is where the pollinator garden was destroyed in one place. And so I'm here to thank you because I'm going to be going to the meeting and ask people to come because the town has promoted the gardens, they have promoted milkweed, they promoted bees. And the small garden was not attractive, kind of like this garden was not very attractive and people were bothered by it. And I had heard comments about it and it any garden, any gardener knows it takes three years, usually we call it sleep creepy leap. You plant, you let it grow and then it starts to go and this past year was our leap year. The flowers bloomed for the first time, we had the American lady caterpillar come and lay their eggs and we had three caterpillars. And our monarch garden, thank you very much for the monarch pledge has been five, five and this year ten caterpillars. So our quest to educate and support the environment has been growing. But um we're always combating the what people deem to be attractive, I mean and it's it's very hard for us because and I had known about this issue at the library. Um but I didn't think that they would destroy it. So it's not uh it's something that we're going to address going forward, but I I wanted the opportunity with them. As Holly said to me before, we can't do anything about it, I said I wasn't looking to, but you actually have because your legislation and your support. And uh Melanie brought up with me your less lawn more life has supported us. It's really supported us in trying to promote that creatures and that we're part of an environment. And what we do impacts each other, we know an act of kindness impacts somebody. So does planting or watering or doing these things that that also impacts us. So it means a lot for me to be able to go to a meeting and say that the town has been supporting this movement that I realize that some people were not happy with this the way it looked but that the town has made decisions that they wanna go forward and supporting. I know I wanted to come right away but there was so much going on politically, we didn't wanna cause more problems but we were very grateful for the less lawn more life because um it doesn't mean you have to give it all up, but it means that you're allowing portions of it to support. And for the children, it means a lot. Well, the children I work with at the library, I mean I have little Charlotte who has her magic stump that she plays with outside and um other children who plant things and like our hundred year celebration, which I found the original invitation, the kids and families, which unfortunately was destroyed. Kids and families were invited to leave a lasting mark for the future, to plant one and take one home. Cause we wanted the kids to have one for their own yard as well as the library, but the idea that we're all part of a big group. So thank you again. Thank you so much for supporting the environment, for supporting all the groups that work with the environment for giving us a chance to keep protecting the environment. I feel like we had planned, well that's gone now, but we have plans to continue to expand the milkweed garden which we were really thrilled that we had ten this year. And um the kids all named them Tortellini, you know and then and they watched them come out of the chrysalis at the library. And uh we even learned like one of them is actually overwintering, so we need to bring it outside and leave it outside and then in the spring it will grow. So I I just wanted to take that moment again to thank you for your continuing support for the garden club and the other groups that volunteer. It means so much to us and um we feel very dedicated to the work that we do and caring for the community, so thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you so much.
Karen.
And I know Karen, I just wanna thank you as well and all the groups who do support this work because you are such stalwart and committed members. Uh and it's not it's not that easy to educate people on these matters and you know people make mistakes. And uh and I know that sometimes it feels like you're starting from scratch, from you know
Yeah.
back from square one, but you but you really aren't because you know with every day, every passing moment that you keep working on this, people are more educated and more informed. And so I wanna thank you for not not giving up and staying strong and doing this work.
And Karen, I was telling the garden club, I was joking with them that we need to have bros that grow because so many so many men stopped yeah stopped at our site to ask us really intense questions
It's catchy.
like why aren't my blueberries growing, so
I love gardening.
Yes, I know, we need we need a lot, I've seen
I think I'm wrong.
My husband is the gardener in our
See, and I have a lot of that.
Jeremy, you can found the bros that grow.
Yeah. Well, I'm working with that, I'm gonna see if I can convince the garden club ladies of we know.
By the way, have you tried joaquin weed?
I know joaquin weed.
Oh, I love joaquin weed, oh.
Because that's very pretty and uh it grows well with uh milkweed and that.
You know what it was?
It's good to block off if you wanna block.
Oh absolutely, this particular site was was designated as a very difficult to grow site.
Joaquin weed is great.
And so we worked with Dennis and and Melanie, we chose specific plants because it was a site doesn't get a lot of water, doesn't really um it's very hot. So I think that the people who put things in that I hate to say they're probably gonna die, didn't know that. So um it's 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 definitely, but yes, bros that grow. We uh we we uh yeah, I had a half an hour conversation with Peter about compost. So I I just it's it's
Mm-hmm.
you know we we're gonna have a downside, but uh thanks again for the you know the li- if we can have that milkweed out there as an example and hopefully the butterflies will stop on.
There will be silver lining to this.
Yeah, and the birds.
Because people will, people will learn, so.
And the birds, I mean uh Emma who's working downtown around the city bank, we wanna work around the milkweed, we know people are not thrilled about that but we have plans. Um is that is a bird sanctuary. If you ever want to hear a lot of birds, go sit by the city bank.
Oh.
You will see and hear so many birds, it's really lovely.
Nice.
And and particularly during migration season, there are just tons of them there, so thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate the time, I know you've done a lot to do things for the water.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
It's okay.
You see I look excited, I got joaquin weed.
You did, I was so surprised, thank you, believe it, we should talk more office.
It's up, it's up. Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. Talk about joaquin weed. Um okay, so that brings us to our consent agenda. All right, let's see, Holly, do you wanna get us started?
Hi, can you do that? I move to adopt items one to nineteen as listed on the consent agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Hi. I move to retroactively approve payment of claims in the amount of six hundred and thirty five thousand. Let me take you on the list of two ninety cents with um summary, empty check register and detailed voucher, detailed report stated October eighteenth, twenty twenty four. Checks were printed and distributed to each claimant listed on Friday, October eighteenth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi.
I move to authorize the hiring of the following individuals for the position of recreation attendant within the Recreation and Parks Department at the corresponding rates as indicated below, effective November fourth, twenty twenty four. Uh will be hiring Courtney Glover and Sarah Beth Gottlieb at the rates listed in uh our resolution packet.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi.
Hi.
Jeremy, go ahead.
I move to approve the intermunicipal agreement between the town of Newcastle and the Chapqua Central School District regarding installation and operation of two electronic message boards located in Robert E. Bell Middle School property property for a term of five years effective from the date the fully executed agreement is delivered and received by each party.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm really very happy about that.
Yes, I was very ecstatic that it's done.
Yeah.
Me too.
Yeah.
That's great.
I move to authorize the waiver of penalties from the twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four school taxes for S B L eight two one three one one for the total amount of two hundred and twenty four dollars seventy five cents with our consent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi.
Um.
Okay, who wants to read the resolution on um the eminent domain?
Jeremy.
I I need zero, I'm gonna get it from my digital. Alright, uh this is regarding the acquisition of twenty pardon me, twenty two zero dash two thirty Joan Corwin Way to facilitate expansion of existing town highway and D P W garage and maintenance facilities. Just in the beginning is uh whereas in two thousand twenty one, the town board commenced procedures uh with respect to the acquisition of twenty uh I haven't had enough time with that, I apologize. Two two zero dash two three zero Joan Corwin Way pursuant to town law section sixty four sub two and the New York State eminent domain proceeding procedural law. And uh now therefore be resolved that the town board authorizes the performance of an update to the original appraisal by valuation plus. And be it further resolved that the town board authorize performance of an update to the original title report by Fidelity National Title Insurance Services, L L C. And be it further resolved that the council for the town of Newcastle, Bleakley Platt and Schmidt, L L P is hereby authorized to undertake such actions as are necessary to effectuate further proceedings for the acquisition of the premises.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh I think that's it, may I have a motion to adjourn?
It's moved. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi.